Okay, thank you.
Just to know for the record too, as we were out of executive session, that there will be, at least at this point, a resolution added to the agenda based upon the executive session discussion. And the title of that resolution, and when we get to it as part of the, as part of the agenda, I will read it into the record. But the title of the resolution to be placed on tonight's agenda is a resolution in the Borough of Angola Cliffs, rescinding introduction of ordinance 21-17. That'll be under the resolutions section of our agenda for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have my hand up.
Mr. Wu had his hand up first. Mr. Wu, did you have anything else to add?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that, that, that rescission got, got read. So that's all. Thank you. The proposed.
So let me just say, Dominic, when we come back. Yes, Mr. Pharaoh.
Yes, I would like to, there was some resolution. I don't have it with me. I know from the House. Regarding the Borough Clerk, I would like to place it on the agenda. I don't have that resolution with me.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm aware of that resolution. If it's to be placed on, then we'll read it. Or special counsel will read it into the record if the council moves forward on that issue. That'll come after the public portion and the discussion on the agenda.
Well, Dominic, doesn't that have to go on before the public portion to make sure the public could comment? Otherwise, we have to.
Yeah, it just would like.
Yeah, it's placed. It's placed. Yeah, I noted that it's placed. And if you do go forward with it, we'll read it into the record at that time, just like our.
What I have over here is just discussion.
Correct. We will, we are now placing that resolution as your request, Councilman, on, on, on the resolutions portion of the. We will read it into the record at that, which is one of the last items on the agenda. Once you have the.
Do I get clarification on that resolution?
All right, I, I'm speaking. Do you need any motions or resolutions regarding that right now, Mr. Deani?
If, if you'd like to, you can do it. I would, I would like the motion on, if you'd like to place that one on, yes. The other one for the executive sessions on the max, since it was.
Okay, I think that's what Mr. Pharaoh was, was doing. It's, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, I made a motion.
To place that on the agenda.
To place it on the agenda, yes.
Mr. Deani.
And if I may, what, what are we placing on the agenda? That's all I'm asking.
Mr. Deani, go ahead and explain.
We're gonna have a, on the agenda, we have a discussion in the public regarding the Borough Clerk's position. Special counsel's handling that matter. We'll, we'll discuss that, guide you, guide you all through that. But the potential result of that discussion would be, and the title of the resolution would be a resolution authorizing disciplinary charges as to the Borough Clerk. Now, we're not going to get into that right now, but that would be the title of the resolution. And that would be now placed on the agenda. And if you're gonna go forward, it would be voted upon after the discussion. We'll let, when that part comes up in the, in the meeting, we'll have a special counsel address.
Mayor, there was no second. That was only a motion.
Can I have a second if, if somebody wishes to, to second that?
I'll second it.
Do, do we get a roll call, Mr. Deani, or do we just move by consensus?
I do a roll call.
Have a roll call, Ms. Clerk.
Council President Wu.
So we're putting this, just to confirm, put a discussion, right?
Do we have discussion on it? Are we just jumping in?
Mr. Deani, can you run the process on this?
Yeah, sure. As you see on the agenda for tonight's special meeting, there is a public portion on the, in the public part, a discussion regarding Borough Clerk's position. That's going to be conducted by special counsel. At the end of that discussion, by special counsel, there'll be an opportunity for the Borough governing body to move on a resolution to authorize disciplinary charges. But that's, you know, only after, you know, special counsel goes through that.
There'll be another vote, right?
It'll be another vote. This is just to place the actual resolution on for consideration.
Yeah. Okay, yes.
My question is, is there going to be discussion after the second? Or are we just going to jump in? So if I'm just gonna jump in, my question is, has the Borough Clerk been properly Rice-noticed?
Mr. Luciano, we're gonna go through that. This is just to place the resolution on the agenda. It's not to decide the, the resolution. You'll have that opportunity later in this meeting, once it's, if it's moved and seconded.
Are you saying that we don't need to Rice-notice the Borough Clerk even though it's just a motion to move forward with something?
Yes, that's, that's, that's how we're, that's how we're treating this, this. Yes, that's our opinion. And I believe that's special counsel's opinion.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion.
There's a motion.
I apologize.
We're in the middle of a vote.
Thank you.
We're in the middle of a vote. And Mr. Luciano, we're in the middle of a vote. Ms. Clerk, can you continue?
Council President Wu.
Yes.
Council, Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh?
Yes.
Councilman Cetrubis? Councilman Cetrubis? I don't see him anywhere.
He's here.
Councilman Cetrubis?
Yeah.
He's not muted. Councilman Dicagorio?
No.
Cetrubis is.
Yes. But.
Councilman Luciano? Councilman Luciano?
Yeah, I, I, see, this is where I'm confused, because Councilman Cetrubis was called before me now, which you said he voted last. But somehow now he's voting before me. So I'm just curious, but Councilman Cetrubis is back. So if you're going that order, I'd like for him to vote.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be last in the roll call. I don't know. It's probably because Ms. Borchers is new. It's okay.
Yeah, that, that's why I was a little confused. I'm, so. Would you wish to vote or do you want to vote after me?
I'll wait after you.
No, my vote's a no.
Councilman Cetrubis?
Yes.
Give me a four votes, Mayor, yes.
Okay, so four yes, two no's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a call for a special meeting.
Second. Second, the motion.
Mr. Deani.
Special meeting, so I could be clear on it, just so I could be clear.
I, I've got a question. So hold on. I'm asking Mr. Deani, is that the proper procedure or do you, do you do it tomorrow?
No, you know, I, I had mentioned this, and I believe our office had advised in the past, based on our review, that we would, we would ask that it be done in writing. You could do it tomorrow. But unless, it's not on the agenda for this evening, and we've been consistent, just trying to be consistent, like the Borough is trying to do, moving forward.
And according to our bylaws, sir.
Luciano, you're not recognized.
Can I please say?
Mr. Luciano, Mr. Luciano, we, we went over this with you already. He went over it with you before this meeting. Stop wasting everyone's time. Put it in writing tomorrow. The agenda for this meeting does not call for anything else that's not on the agenda. If it's too difficult for you to understand that, we'll explain it to you again, but not now, because you probably wasted already an hour of our time on this very issue. Okay, which you should not have been talking about in closed session, and we kept trying to stop you, okay? Because it's not on our closed session agenda. So, so stop it. We're gonna move forward with our agenda. It's already 10 o'clock.
A motion, motion.
No, there's no motion on the floor. You're not recognized. You're not recognized. We have an agenda. This is a special meeting. You all know the rules, right? If it's a special meeting, you can only do what's on the agenda. The public can speak about anything, and they're welcome to do so. You, as a council, cannot, because this stuff that you're mentioning now is not on the agenda. And we're being consistent. This is the way it was in 2015, 16, before 15, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21. Okay? Mr. Luciano, Mr. Dicagorio.
Always have a meeting in writing. Was this special meeting in writing? Was the request for this special meeting?
This meeting, this meeting was created by the agenda committee. That's a different issue, sir. Okay, look, Mr. Deani, I'm able to move forward with.
Was this, was this special meeting?
Mr. Luciano, really, you don't have the floor. The chair does not recognize you. End of discussion on this. Okay, next on our agenda is the public portion. Mr. Deani, is that where we go?
Yes, Mayor, so we need a motion open to the public.
I need a motion.
A motion on the floor.
I need a motion open to the public.
I have a point of order. Mr. Deani, was this special meeting?
Mr. Deani, points of order are directed to the chairman, sir. Mr. Deani is not the chairman. No, 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 no. Mr. Deani is not the chairman. He's the attorney. I'm the chairman. You keep directing the same issue to me, and I keep telling you, you are not recognized again for the same issue. It's been asked and answered several times, okay? Can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Mr. Deani.
Mr. Mr. Dicagorio, you do not have the floor either. Mr. Pharaoh has now moved to open to the public. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Anyone opposed? This is. All right, so let the record reflect that Mr. Luciano opposes opening the meeting to the public.
For the reason.
Meeting is now open to the public. Mr. Luciano, I have to mute you because you keep interrupting, okay? Okay, that's not proper. The meeting is now open to the public. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please just raise your hand virtually or unmute yourself. If you're on a phone. I see a lot of people don't have their cameras on, so it's a little difficult, but virtually, you could raise your hand with the, the zoom button to do so. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard?
I'm seeing hands, Mayor.
Okay, I, I, hearing and seeing, no hands, no one from the public. Have a motion to close the public portion, please.
Point of order.
We're in the middle of closing. You don't have the floor.
A point of order takes precedence.
No, no, we're closing the public portion. You don't recognize, you're not recognized, okay? There are rules, and even, even you gentlemen, Mr. Luciano, Mr. Dicagorio, you've been at this for a month, two months. You should be able to actually understand what these rules are by now. Who made the motion? Okay, Mr. Pharaoh made the motion, and have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Paul. Mr. Deani, I'm gonna point of order.
Let the record reflect that now, Mr. Luciano.
Mr. Deani, could you weigh in on that, please?
I'm sorry, hold on a second. I have the floor.
Mr. Deani, can you weigh in on that, please?
Mr. Luciano opposed closing to the public after he opposed opening to the public. So we're not exactly sure what Mr. Luciano would like to see happen tonight. Mr. Deani, we are now closing the public portion. Next on the agenda is discussion, Borough Clerk's position. And just for the record, I did not create this part of the agenda. Good, Mr. Deani.
I'm good. You know, we have special counsel for this issue. They've been retained. Our office is not in, in this, in this issue, so I turn this over to Mr. Dowling, Mr. Bone, joining us. Special counsel on this. I'll turn it over to those gentlemen.
All right, Jay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You haven't seen me before. My name is Jay Bone. I'm an attorney in this office. And we've been tasked with reviewing certain facts about the Borough Clerk and determining, preparing a draft complaint seeking her removal from office. Before I get into the merits of that, I want to address the procedural issue that was mentioned earlier by Mr. Luciano in terms of the Rice notice to Ms. Duffy. And this issue has also been raised by Bruce Atkins, who is an attorney who represents Ms. Duffy in litigation that she has filed against the Borough. I received a letter late this afternoon from Mr. Atkins, which I forwarded to every member of the council in which he asserts that because no notice was given to her of this meeting under the principles of Rice versus the Union County Board of Education, that this discussion cannot proceed. We, and basically, if I may digress a moment, the Open Public Meetings Act, as a general rule, requires all public discussions of public bodies to be held in open session. However, there are certain specifically enumerated exceptions to that where the public body may hold, hold a discussion, but not a vote, in a closed session. One of those exceptions is certain personnel matters. That personnel matter exception is itself subject to an exception that if every employee who's, may suffer an adverse consequence, wishes to have that discussion take place in the open, then it cannot be held in closed session. In 1978, the appellate division of the Superior Court in the Rice case decided that the ability to require an open discussion assumed that the employee would have knowledge that his or her employment would be the subject of discussion. And therefore, we have the judges construing the statute to determine that if the public body wishes to hold a closed session discussion, they must give notice in advance to the employee to give that employee an opportunity to request that it be held in public. That's what's called a Rice notice. In 2018, the Supreme Court, in a case, Kane Federation of Teachers versus Morel, decided that the Rice notice requirement only applies if you're going to hold the discussion in a closed session. If the public body is going to hold the discussion in an open session, no notice is required. And it, it is our opinion that that applies to the discussion held tonight and that there was no obligation to provide a particular Rice notice to Ms. Duffy. I would note that we attempted to provide a notice to her for a prior meeting, and it appeared that there were attempts made to evade that notice. And Mr. Atkins has made very clear that he is not authorized to accept notice on her behalf. I just want you to be aware of his position and the promise, or you could call it threat, he has made every time he communicated with me today, that if the board proceeds with this discussion tonight, he will be in court tomorrow, seeking to bring an order to show cause. So with that procedural background, if the board wants to proceed to the merits, I'm prepared to do so.
Council President Wu, what would you like to do?
Yeah, well, um, let's proceed.
Okay.
Good.
Under the statute governing the position of municipal clerk, and specifically here, I'm talking about NJSA 40A colon 9-133.7. Once a clerk has acquired tenure, as Ms. Duffy has, then she shall not be removed from the position for political reasons, but only for good cause shown and after a proper hearing for the director of the Division of Local Government Services or the directors designate. In order to obtain that removal, there has to be a written complaint setting forth with specificity the charger charges against the clerk. In order to have that specificity, a draft complaint has been prepared, has been provided to the council. It speaks in five counts. The most, the longest count and the most detail is count one, which is the failure to prepare accurate and timely minutes. And minutes have not been prepared for a substantial number of meetings, including most of 2021. And some were only provided shortly before Ms. Duffy's administrative leave began. And of course, the preparation of minutes is one of the core duties of the municipal court. There are also counts related to failure to maintain archival records because the certain emails were lost. The municipal Facebook page was deleted, and Ms. Duffy has refused to restore it, maintaining that it is her personal property. The Borough YouTube channel, which is controlled via a Gmail mail account, had shortly before Ms. Duffy went on administrative leave, the legal address associated with that account was changed to Stephen Duffy at Ms. Duffy's home address. And there is a credit card, which is not a Borough credit card, associated with that account. And finally, so understanding that for a period of time, Ms. Duffy was seeking information from Borough employees supposedly to be put in a Borough newsletter, when in fact, the newsletter to be published was not a Borough publication, but a political publication. That is a summary of the charges that we have prepared in a draft complaint. And if the council wishes to proceed, there's a resolution authorizing the signing of that complaint and filing of it with the Division of Local Government Services. At this, that, that's the end of my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Bone, before discussion, I would just like to briefly just put a statement on the record on behalf of Lizette Duffy.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, oh, yes, I will. Sorry, Mayor. All right, good evening. My name is Deborah McGarvey. I'm an attorney with the firm of Deutsch, Aktzen, and Kleinfeld. Some of you may know, we represent Lizette Duffy in the claim that she is, that she has brought against the Borough. And so I just want to first address the issue of the Rice notice. There's no evidence that she was evading service of the Rice notice. She never evaded service. She just was never, was never served. And the citation and the reference that there's no obligation to serve her with a Rice notice is actually inaccurate based on the Supreme Court, the 2018 Supreme Court. She, the failure to, to discuss her at this meeting without pricing her is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. She was, as the bar, the special counsel indicated, she was previously, they previously, you previously tried to serve her with a Rice notice. Were unsuccessful doing that, and now it was put at this time on the public session. And to do that is a deliberate violation of her Rice notices, her Rice notice. And in the Kane case, what I'll read it directly from the case, it says, there's no obligation to send Rice notices in a setting such as the one from the case, where the board determined from the start to conduct its discussion about faculty reappointments in public session. Therefore, there really is, it is a violation of the Rice notice if you intend to discuss it in enclosed session, and then you fail to serve her with it, and then you then place it on the public, in the public session. So that is a violation, and her only recourse of that violation would be to bring an order to show cause, which, if passed, we, we will do on her behalf. I also want to just state that the charges that have been asserted against her are unfounded. They're being issued in retaliation for her prior complaints in the lawsuit, which was recently filed on May 19th, 2021. And I also just want to point out that the May 12th meeting, the Borough Attorney indicated that no charges were pending. Then, after the Borough and its employees were served Ms. Duffy's lawsuit, now we're here again where the Borough is, is seeking to file tenure charges to remove her from her position. So these actions are clearly retaliatory. Any action taken by the court will, I'm sorry, any action taken by the Borough will be dealt with in the court of law and will pursue all remedies available to her, including punitive damages against any individuals who are found responsible for this illegal conduct. Thank you.
Just a procedural note, prior to Ms. McGarvey speaking, Councilman Luciano, and this is recorded, said, "Good luck, Deborah." I, I, I leave that where it is. Mr. Bone.
I was getting it into the record accurately. That's what I meant by my good luck, Mr. Mayor.
Of course, you don't have the floor, sir. Mr. Bone, go ahead.
Oh. I, I, I completed my presentation. I'm open to any questions. And I, and I am not advocating that the Borough proceed one way or the other in terms of whether, whether you decide to proceed with charges or not. That, that's, my role was to prepare charges, and we will file them if the Borough decides to proceed. But we do not have a position on whether the Borough should proceed or not.
Earl Council.
Mayor, I do have my hand up and I have a question.
Earl Council President Wu, did you have anything to say, or Mr. Pharaoh?
I, I moved the, I moved the, that.
Of course, I have my hand up, Mr. Mayor. I'd like.
I move it. I move, Mr. Mayor.
There'll be discussion. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
So Pharaoh moved, procedurally, Wu seconded discussion.
What's this motion? What's the motion?
I'm sorry.
Someone had a question. Someone said, what's the motion? I don't know.
That's Borough Attorney Deani. I was just, just trying to clarify for the record. What's the motion that he's?
The charges against Lizette Duffy, the clerk.
Mr. Bone, do, do you want to clarify that?
I believe that the motion would, is to adopt the draft resolution that was forwarded, authorizing the filing of the charges. Is that correct, Mr. Pharaoh?
Yes, yes.
Wu, do you second that?
Yes, second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Luciano, I see you do have your hand up and not your camera.
Thank you. Mr. Deani and Ms. Vaughn, I have a question, because I've, I've tried to raise questions about racing. So I'd really like a definitive answer from our council, because I've been told previously that in order for me to speak about any employee, they needed to be properly Rice. As a matter of fact, I have an email from the mayor that says, before we can speak about any employee, they need to be Rice-noticed. Now I hear Mr. Bond telling us that we don't need to Rice-notice people if we want to talk about them in public. So I'd like for you to tell me, as our council, are, am I at, if right now, after this motion, are we able to talk about employees without them being Rice? Because I'm very confused.
As I tried to explain, the Rice notice is developed from a case that interpreted an exception to the requirement that discussions be held in public. The, the exception is to discussions involving possible disciplinary charges against employees or employment actions against them. And the employee who is, could be discussed in a closed session has a right to require it to be discussed in an open session. If there's a single employee, if there are multiple employees, they all have to demand that it be discussed in open session in order to preclude discussion in a closed session. Between the decision in Rice and the decision in the Kane case in 2018, I think there was some confusion that all discussions had to be done in a special meeting, I mean, in a closed meeting, unless the employee demanded that it be discussed in the open. And what the Kane case tells us is the ability to discuss in a closed session is permissive. The, the public body may discuss it in closed session. It is not required to do so. And absent any potential discussion in closed session, there is no affirmative obligation to notify employees anytime that a discussion about them may be held in a public meeting. As the, and I think the, the key sentence in the Kane case was requiring Rice notices to employees when a public discussion is already planned, so that the employees, if all agreed, could in turn insist that the discussion be public. At once defies logic, and as pointed out by Amicki supporting the board, imposes a greater burden on public entities than the legislature envisioned under NJSA 10 colon 4-12 BA. So it, it, I, I, I'm, it is my opinion that, that after the Kane case, it's very clear that an open discussion may be had about employees without giving them prior notice.
I, I appreciate it. Mr. Deani, can you clarify? I appreciate, and no disrespect, Mr. Bond, you're our special counsel. I'd like to hear from Mr. Deani, because once again, I'm still a little confused, because I've been, once again, an email that says, "We're not permitted to speak about anybody." Closed session, open session, anybody, and I'll, I wish I had the, the email up from the mayor. But, or, I, I, maybe the mayor can opine on it as well, since he's the one that opined that you couldn't speak about anybody without Rice-ing them. But, or, I, I, maybe the mayor can opine on it as well, since he's the one that opined that you couldn't speak about anybody without riceing them. So if maybe our counsel, Mr. Deani, could advise me, because I, I'm still somewhat confused. I appreciate Mr. Bond's reply. It was the same thing that he said before. Didn't really answer my question. If, after this vote right now, if I wanted, regardless, I know special meeting, all that other stuff, if I wanted at any meeting to raise an issue of an employee, do they need to be rice?
You, again, I don't want to get off track because we have a, a motion here in a second and.
It's discussion, though.
Understood, but to just answer you generally, if, if you plan on discussing the individual in public, then you don't need a rice notice.
Thank you very much.
Not advised to just spring, just to spring it during a meeting. It would have to be, in my opinion, on the agenda. But if you intend to have that discussion in private, in executive, then the rice notice is required.
But if you can't get it on the agenda for whatever reason, I think your only, your only recourse is to bring it up. And I hear from two separate counsel now that if you want to bring it up in public session, you don't need rice notices. That's what our counsel is telling us. So I appreciate, I appreciate the response.
So long as the discussion was planned to be in public. So like I said, not.
I have no problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, did I, can, can you continue with the roll call? I have a roll call now.
Council President Wu.
Yes.
Councilman Park.
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh.
Yes.
Councilman Digo Goryo.
No.
No. Councilman Luciano.
No.
Councilman Katurbas. Councilman Katurbas. Councilman Katurbas.
Yeah, I, I'm going.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your votes, sir.
I'm, I'm abstaining. I'm too new to the council. I don't really know what's going on, so thank you.
There's three eyes, two nays, one abstain.
Mr. Bone, Mr. Dowling, thank you. I'm not sure if, if that's the end of your role tonight at this meeting. If it is, I, I, I thank you. I wish you a good night, but please advise me if there's more for you.
I'm not aware of anything, sir.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to have.
Again, it's a special agenda. It's a special meeting with a special agenda. If you have a point of order, I, I may recognize you.
I have a.
What is, what is your point of order?
I would like to have a special meeting about just this topic as soon as possible.
I'm not sure what this is, and I'm not sure what your special meeting is, but we, we find over this and over this and over this. Mr. Deani did a really good job of explaining it to you about seven times.
That we need it in writing. No one else does, but we do.
You, you actually have an agenda committee and you could also have.
I've sent many things to the agenda committee. We can't get it in.
Well, that, that's the way the agenda committee evaluates it. See, that, that's. Guys, just so you understand, there's two of you, and you're free to introduce things, but not necessarily have them be effective, right?
But they should be able to get on the agenda so that we can discuss them.
What, 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 what is it that you want?
What is it that we want? Let's see what we've put on the agenda. To have people write so that we can speak about them per your email, so that we can rescind the settlement agreement, which I think we're going to do. Because the last time, supposedly, the email that went around is that the agenda committee suggested that the, the four items to be placed on the agenda were totally ignored. Meeting, resolution about the eminent domain, RFQ, RFB, for special counsel, RFP, RFQ.
I'm sorry, show me where on the agenda tonight these items appear. Help me out here, because I'm not seeing.
Unfortunately, they don't. You asked me a question about what did you put to the agenda committee that hasn't been. Let me finish my question. I mean, my answer. You asked me a question.
This is a special meeting. Mr. Deani.
You asked me a question. Mayor, you asked me a question. I would greatly appreciate if you'd let me answer the question.
You've been asking the same question all night.
No, I have not. Don't, don't, that's totally, that's a total lie. That's like every. Mr. Deani. We want, the resolution, the agenda committee asked that a special meeting be held and that we wanted to have, that it was supposed to be, this wasn't me, this was another council person, for a resolution against the eminent domain ordinance, rescinding it, and RFQ and RF, or an RFP for special counsel to extend it instead of closing it, and RFP, RFQ for, to, for, to seek a new Borough administrator, setting up a hiring committee. These were all things, not my email.
There was a time.
Came from the agenda committee that the mayor overruled.
We, we heard you. I just want to have the floor. There, there was a time when things were always put in order, right? You had a regular meeting, you got things on the agenda, there was an agenda committee, and it was collegial, right? It was also a time when a special meeting was just that. And Mr. Deani, I want you to take control of this now, okay? Because I've been doing this for five years, and special meetings were always limited to the special items on that agenda. So now, now I, I've got the wheels coming off this car because Mr. Luciano, Mr. DiGorrio wants certain things. And it's becoming childish, okay? Because we're here, it's 10 o'clock at night, and, and these guys keep repeating the same thing. So please, for once and for all, take charge of this issue, settle it and, and give them guidance that even they could understand, okay? Thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Deani, before you start, mayor, you asked.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deani has the floor, okay?
Now, our, our office, you know, we don't have to go through this again. Our office has opined on this. We've, we've advised that the Borough Council wants to call a special meeting, that they do so in writing for members. You can set the date and time, just make sure that the other members of the council receive that written notice. And then follow the, I can tell you, follow the agenda committee procedures for that special meeting or any other meeting to place items on. We shouldn't be discussing it this evening. That's for the agenda committee to discuss.
I'd like to request, I'd like to request that writing of the request for this special meeting. I'd like to see that writing and the four council members that requested it in writing. Put that on the record, please. I would like to see the in-writing request for tonight's special meeting.
There was an agenda committee meeting. I know it's probably hard for you to understand, but a committee.
Very difficult, very difficult when you don't follow.
I'm sorry, I have the floor. This is the way it's always been after 2019, 2018, actually. Just the agenda committee met, they considered all the items, and the items on the agenda tonight are the items that were passed to be on this agenda.
You can't do that. Everything needs to go.
You don't have the floor, okay? You don't have the floor. Let's not just interrupt each other.
And like, and like I advised, counsel, that, you know, our office will be providing attorney-client privileged communication regarding this. Very shortly, so we can, we can put any of these issues to bed, but that's not going to be this evening. I apologize, but it'll be very soon. Believe we need to, you do need to stick to the special meeting agenda. There are two items left, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to see it in writing. I'd like to see the written request for this.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have the floor, Mr. Luciano. I chair the meeting. And if you can't respect the fact that I do chair the meeting, then don't come to the meeting. But as long as you're here, we have to get through our agenda, okay? All right, the next item on the agenda is introduction of ordinances. Is that what you want me to do, Dominic?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so this is a public hearing on July 14th, 2021. This is ordinance 2021-18. Introduction of a bond ordinance authorizing the acquisition of new additional replacement equipment and machinery, new communication and signal systems, equipment, new information technology equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the Borough of Englecliffs in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $891,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Again, this is an introduction to have a motion to introduce it, please. You have a second? Discussion? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Council President Wu.
Yes.
Councilman Park.
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh.
Yes.
Councilman DiGorrio.
No, because, no, absolutely not.
Because, David, because you don't want to have a 911 system that works?
You can make an emergency transfer out of the litigation line. He's muted.
He needs to unmute himself. He could unmute himself. I've asked him to unmute himself. He's not doing so. Mr. Katurbas, I just got a text that you were dropped, but I.
Yeah, I'm back in, thank you.
Councilman Katurbas.
Oh, I'm sorry, the vote is for, I was, I was dropped from the meeting. Can you tell me what the vote is for?
So this is the 2021-18 is the bond ordinance authorizing acquisition of
Right, so my, my vote is no.
Councilman Luciano.
No.
Okay, so when, when 911 doesn't work, you all, you all to blame for that. Yes, Ms. McMoran?
When you start treating us fairly, you get better.
You don't have the floor.
Mayor, at the, at the June 9th meeting, I was directed to put together a third bond ordinance. This is the third bond ordinance that we've put together of capital for items that I consider emergency needs for public health, safety, and protection of the borough. Under the direction of Mr. Bernstein, the council was polled, and I was tasked with finding out what, what items would we have for affirmative votes on. And there were members of this council that represented that they would vote for this. And again, I believe this is their, a certain members acting in retaliation to not vote for this until I am removed from this office. And there are emails, you're aware of it, Councilman Katurbas is behind most of it. And I find it offensive that I'm being retaliated and that the Borough is being put in this position to be strong-armed, to not vote for emergency items needed to protect the residents of this town. Shame on these council members that are voting no to a 911 system, to an IT system that this borough is hanging on by a thread with in supporting. And a phone.
Point of order.
I have, I have put this on the record, mayor. It is not the chief.
This is important, gentlemen. Go ahead, Mr. McMoran.
No, if something fails and, and, and anything goes wrong, it is not at the fault of Chief Hinkleman or myself, and it's not as easy as all these council members are saying, just move money in a budget line. You can't. You have to reintroduce the budget. You've got to get the votes for the budget introduction to pass again. We can't get a vote on anything to pass on this council. Okay, so I already checked with the CFO. It's not as easy. And you can have the CFO come to the next meeting. At this point, the state will probably take over on emergency services.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Katurbas, I'm just curious as to why you're, you're opposed to having a functioning, fully functioning new 911 system.
I think, I think that you're very well aware. First, first and foremost, I don't.
I'm asking you, so I'm not.
No, 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 hold on a second. I don't, you, you're asking me, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer for you. First and foremost, those are pretty bold words for somebody who is an employee here. Second.
A harassed employee, I will add.
Again, second, I'd like to point to Mr. Dominic DeYanni's firm. They are very well aware of my position. Perhaps the Borough Administrator is not, and that's what makes the words, makes her words bold. And, and I know that you're aware of my position, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I know the Council President Wu is very well of my position. If you choose, if you would like to further have me drag it into the public, I will be more than happy to do so. But at this moment, but at this moment, you can, you can please refer back to Mr. Bernstein. Thank you. Nothing more to say.
Just to have a question, because I didn't understand anything he just said.
Oh.
Mr. Deani, to, to actually do what I think Mr. DiGorrio said earlier, to move money from a, from the operating budget, the municipal budget, to the capital ordinance or to cover this item, what needs to get done? Because I, I don't want this town to not have a functioning 911, and I'm not, I'm not willing to play politics with this the way Mr. DiGorrio, Mr. Luciano, Mr. Katurbas are also willing to do. It's just wrong. And, and they will have blood on their hands if this doesn't work out, okay?
First and foremost.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. De, De, and go ahead.
Did the vote, did the vote, did the, the vote even finish? I was very, me just listening in here, I heard three votes, three votes in here, mayor's vote.
Can I break a tie on a capital ordinance? Introduction?
At least on the intro.
Okay, can I vote yes? But you all still have blood on your hands. End of discussion. What else do we have to do tonight?
All that's left on the special agenda is the resolution we placed on after executive session, which is a resolution of the Borough of Englecliffs rescinding the introduction of ordinance 2117.
I make the motion.
Second.
Have a roll call.
What was the?
Motion to rescind.
Thank you.
You know, earlier, Mr. Luciano, you said rescind the settlement agreement. So is that what you wanted?
That's not what I said, but you, you should maybe get.
Oh, you did, actually. Go back, listen to the recording.
Listen to the recording yourself, Mr. Mayor.
I, I know what I.
That's what I mean. So you keep just talking. Go to, there's a motion and a second. Call for discussion or comment.
I think this council's making a mistake. First of all, there, there's no.
Here we go.
You know, this, this, this town has been sold down the river by the 2019, 2020 Democrat council majority.
And you're trying to break this.
You, you guys are hauled over, okay? Thing about it is, though, that even though 807 is going up and down because the lawyers were negligent and let this hall exist in the settlement agreement, it's not a ripe issue yet. It's just been introduced so that we could explore it. Right? It's not ripe. If, if anything, it becomes a ripe issue after it's approved. But you guys don't have the stomach to fight for this. It's, it's your decision. I just present options to you since you were not presenting options to me. Please continue with the roll call.
Council President Wu.
Yes.
Councilman Park.
Yes.
Councilman Pharaoh. Councilman Pharaoh. Did he say yes?
He's, he's waiting for the text from the mayor.
No, 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 nothing like that, nothing like that, all right? It's, it's very hard to make. Not easy.
We could come back to you if you wish.
No, we can, we can lose our immunity. We could have. We can have high density. The only ones allowed to discuss is the mayor. No discussion from anyone else.
Could we have discussion quickly? And I'd like to.
Jump in.
We're, we're in the middle of a vote, but you could have your vote and a discussion. I don't really care.
We, we are, we are, you know, if we have, if you're going to get this eminent domain, we're going to have taxes going through the roof. We're going to lose, the chances are of us losing our immunity is huge. And we are going to.
Base any of that on?
We should let someone finish speaking.
Well, there's, there's things thrown out here. What do you base any of that on? The whole purpose. The whole purpose of this was to explore the option and then have you all decide. But what you're doing is, you're, you're not even, you're not even willing to explore the option.
So, Mr. Deani.
That's followership.
Mr. Deani. Mr. De Annie, just to be clear, this is a motion to rescind the eminent domain scheme, correct?
Yeah, if you'd like, I'll, I'll quickly read it into the record. So.
Please do.
Resolution, the Borough of Engle Cliffs rescinding introduction of ordinance 2117. Whereas the governing body, the Borough of Engle Cliffs, has regularly scheduled meeting in June 9th, 2021, passed by motion, the introduction of ordinance 2117. There's an ordinance authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of real property located 800 Sylvan Avenue, designated as block 910 lot 1 on the Borough of Engle Cliffs official tax map owned by 800 Sylvan Avenue LLC. And whereas prior to the public hearing and potential adoption of ordinance 21-17, the governing body wishes to rescind said motion and introduction of ordinance 21-17. Now therefore be resolved by the Borough of Engle Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that a hereby formally rescinds the motion and introduction of ordinance 21-17, which introduction motion was previously passed as June 9th, 2021 public meeting.
Rescind, yes.
And I would like to say that, you know, we've lost on every turn that we have made. And to go with eminent domain, first off, we lose, even if we were remotely successful, we lose all the ratables. It's going to cost you a hundred million dollars to buy the property. It's going to cost you how many? Let me finish, please.
You don't know that.
It's going to cost multiple, you're going to, it's going to cost millions. Let me finish.
The whole purpose of this exercise was to figure out and compare the, the cost, short term and long term of, of what I call the corrupt October 2020 settlement agreement with a eminent domain uh, action. Okay, that was the whole purpose of this. But what you're telling the public now and the world is that you're not even willing to look at that. You don't even want to figure that out.
Mr. De Annie, I appreciate.
Thank you, uh, if I may, Mr. Digo Goria. Um, so, and we'll say millions of dollars. This is going to cost us millions of dollars. Talk about a community center field. We're talking about one field and it costs 1.2 million dollars. Can I please finish? You're talking about building affordable housing on our, on our own and losing all the ratables. The only way we can afford to do it. First off, I don't think our, our debt, I don't even think we'd be eligible for able to incur that much debt. But anyway.
I already checked.
I think it's a foolish, it's a fool's pa, plan for foolish people to follow. No. I'm voting yes. I, I'm voting yes to, to appeal it to, to, to rescind it.
To rescind.
I made the motion, so yes, I vote yes.
So, so look, you know, um, we do have bonding capacity to do this. We are, we are physically conservative and what you do is you have to figure out how is it going to cost you more um, by having your population explode because there's an influx of market-based.
You have your vote.
Housing. Uh, or do you solve the problem yourself under home rule and eminent domain? Right? So that, that's the issue right there.
Yeah, well, we have. The board holding our feet to the.
I'm not throwing, I'm not throwing numbers out because the whole purpose of this was to get those numbers and then share them with the public and, and then take the public's temperature on what they want, not what you and your cronies want. And just because 800 Sylvan threatens you, they do that every day. They're on this, they're on this Zoom. You know, Dan, Daniel Steinhegen is on the planning board in Tenafly. He wouldn't, he wouldn't pull this in his own town, but he'll pull it here and he doesn't have to live here, right? So, you know, you all should maybe start listening to the uh, Tenafly Planning Board meetings and see for yourself for adjustment. I'm not sure. I think you might be in the Board of Adjustment. Yes, Mr. Digo Goria?
I would like to just say a few words and I hope not to be muted. I believe that the, that Mayor Kranjak has been reckless in.
Yeah, we're not doing that here.
Uh huh.
Attack the issue, not the person. Okay?
I wish you would let the council.
Really, you know.
You don't like it, you cut them off. You don't have to like it. You have to be able to let people speak.
When, when you want to be serious people and actually speak to the issue and not attack people, you could do that. All right. Where are we on this vote?
Council, Councilman Katrubes?
Everyone knows where I stood to begin with. I want nothing to do with this. I'm going to abstain from here.
Right. So much for your campaign promises.
I just need Councilman Pharaoh's vote. I didn't get, I didn't hear that.
Mr. Pharaoh?
Well, I guess I would have to go along. I, it's very hard. It was really very hard to uh, I just have to go along.
Okay. I understood. And this council.
I can't, you know.
Yeah.
I, I I feel uh, terrible about what's going on, you know, what's happened.
That, that's, we understand. And you know, I understand that this council made a decision. It's a hard decision. I know it is.
It is, it's not easy.
But, but don't, don't forget that this is what New Jersey has come to, right? Where elected officials who are democratically elected cannot even exercise their own power because if they do, either the court, either the court is going to strip them from their power or the, the courts are going to let 800 Sylvan beat you over the head personally outside of your in the official capacity. So this isn't a democracy. This has become an administrative state.
It's not.
Right? This is an administrative state where bureaucrats and lawyers roll that log together to basically screw the taxpayers. Okay? That's what happens here. All right. Have a motion to adjourn. Is that where we're at, Mr. De Annie?
No.
What was the, uh, what was the vote on that, Laura? So I work it down.
It was all, it was one abstain and uh, five eyes. Yes.
I commend Mr. Pharaoh. I commend Mr. Wu. Um, I commend Mr. Park for their vote. I think uh, it was a, in a very, very good vote. And it was good for this town and it takes the power away from a person who has been reckless with his governing and mutes people.
You know what? By the way, by the way, guys, by the way, guys, I didn't vote last week. Okay? So I, my job is to introduce concepts to this council because this council doesn't come to me with any concepts.
That's not true.
This was a concept.
That's true.
It is true. But I've been asking you.
You not.
Let me finish. Mr. Katrubes, you in particular have been very vocal. You wanted a committee. I gave you a committee. It is now, that's over a month ago. You still haven't appointed a single member to your committee. You told me in January you had a plan. I keep asking you if you had a plan. In closed session, you didn't want to come to your plan. So I actually, I actually left the room so you could tell the council, but you didn't have a plan. Look, stop playing games. The people elected you guys to lead, not to follow. There's plenty of followers out there, guys.
Am I?
Hold on. You can have the floor after. But when you have a plan that's better than my plan, I'm happy to pivot to your plan. But you all just sit there and come to the meetings and don't do anything in between the meetings. All right? I'm going to see this through. I'm going to keep fighting it. But this is what New Jersey has become. Where, where, where guys who, and women who get elected to public office basically get smashed over and over, even though you're trying to do the right thing and build affordable housing. My plan actually had more than the affordable housing that that Fair Share Housing was supporting with 800 Sylvan.
You're boring the audience.
We, we had 120. You know, so thi, this is what New Jersey's become and Fair Share Housing is a joke, right? Because they should be supporting my plan for crying out loud. We're building more affordable housing units for their constituents in a better scenario with less high density, with new parks, with access to, to everything. Nope, they don't, they don't do that because you know why? The money doesn't flow that way. If you do 100% affordable housing, no one makes any money. And the developer can't push the money down to the campaigns of the Democrats who basically keep this all sham going by appointing judges will continue to sham, right? This is the death spiral of New Jersey. You're all witnessing it. Okay?
Uh, Mr. Katrubes. I, I have a, I have a question for the board clerk, for the clerk.
Yes, Mr. Pharaoh.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, how did she mark my vote? I just wanted to, because what I mentioned was that I just had to go along with the camp, with the.
You voted yes.
So you voted yes, sir.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
Just make sure. I think it was six, uh, six yeses.
Yeah, because I, her, her saying five.
And one was abst, one was abstained.
No.
Abstained. Who abstained?
Mr. Katrubes. Mr. Katrubes.
I thought he voted yes.
I, I, I thought that he, or yes, yes.
Mr. Katrubes, did you, did you not abstain from that?
I abstained. You're correct.
Yes.
You, you abstained. Okay. Pardon me. All right. Have a motion. Is that all, Dominic?
Yep, just have to adjourn.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn.
Almost. Second.
On favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? The eyes have it. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Dominic.
Take care, everyone. Be safe.
Big loss.